First I'll take questions for staff from the commission.
Got a quick one. Darren, the whole purpose of this remedial grading is to make the slopes stable and correct the deficiencies that were created by the initial grading that happened, right?
The main purpose for the work is the corrective grading. The addition of the accessory structure, the gazebo at the top of the site, at the top of the grading, is not required for the corrective grading.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
I have a question. Let's just turn the clock back about five years. If he asked to come to you, came to you at the desk and made an application to do this work, could he ultimately have been able to do it?
With the approval of the appropriate permits, he could. Obviously, there is a somewhat of a pad area up on that slope, but any accessory structure in that location would require the ridgeline alteration permit, the hillside development review, maybe or maybe not the oak tree permit depending on what, you know, plants are around. But it's, it would be up to the city council to make that determination.
I guess then we could just try to figure out what the odds were that he could get it then, right? Okay.
Right, Commissioner Ostrom, five years ago, the ridgeline alteration permit did not exist.
How about like one year ago?
Well, one year ago, we actually had the innovative, if you remember, the innovative application that he may have had to apply for at that time.
But Darren, just one more quick one. Further on to Dennis's question, five years ago, it would have been, it appears that it would have been technically possible to safely engineer the grading that needed to be done in order to do what he wanted to do, from a technical.
Technically, yes. Technically, he could have gotten.
And it just would have been subject to whether or not the council and the commissions and what other, whatever other agencies wanted to grant that approval, but it was technically sound.
Correct.
Thank you.
I understand that the oak trees that were affected have been inspected and they are healthy. Still, was there any assessment made of the long-term outlook for them?
We do have Wayne Smith, our city's oak tree specialist here. He might be better able to speak to that question.
Okay, while he's coming up, I'll ask you another one, and that is with regard to the lawsuit that the city had to file over, does the city recover any of those costs of pursuing that lawsuit?
And again, we have Emmanuel Shirazi from the city attorney's office here also, so he can get in line.
He could be on deck.
That's right.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Kennedy and members of the commission. The answer to the question is yes, the oak trees are fine, they are healthy, and they will survive.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Emmanuel.
The city has not recovered any fees or costs in the lawsuit that ended in 2007.
Is there any prospect that the city can recover such costs?
Not for past costs, no.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, probably the whole city will probably want to line up for my next question. We had four stop orders issued over a five-year period, but the work continued and continued and continued. Why was not some progressive action taken earlier to stop this project?
I think we might want to have Emmanuel address that one as well.
Code enforced, after multiple stop work orders were issued, the city tried to work out, without litigation, tried to work out some, tried to get them to comply somehow, some way. When that became clear that that was not going to happen, the lawsuit was filed in February of 2006. I'm not sure if that, does that completely answer your question?
I want to see if I'm reading between the lines. He's saying that the city had to file a lawsuit as a matter of last recourse because the individual who was doing the grading was not responding to our earlier efforts to get him to comply with the law.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any more questions for staff? In an open public hearing, I have three comment cards submitted so far, one to support the recommendation of the staff and two opposing this recommendation, not necessarily the staff, but anyway. The first speaker will be on behalf of the applicant, Mr. G. Marshall-Hahn. On deck will be Mr. Greg Kidman, who marked the pose of recommendation. Evening.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm the attorney for the applicant, and I want to speak on a few matters. We also have Ron Horn, who is the engineer here. Let me start by correcting Mr. Shirazi, and in reference to Commissioner Kennedy's question, was it necessary for the city to file this lawsuit because Mr. Dominguez was not listening? No, that is not correct. What was happening is that in July of 2005, I was retained by Mr. Dominguez. Had there been a history of not doing what he should have done? Yes, no question about that. When I was retained, I contacted who was then the city attorney, Chandra Spencer, and advised her that I was on board, I was going to shepherd this, and I assured her that not a pebble would be moved without the proper permits. I met with Ms. Spencer, I met with gentlemen from the planning department, from the grading department, and true to our word, as of August 1, and I sent a letter to Ms. Spencer, not a single violation, not a pebble has been removed, not a tractor has been turned on. What did happen.
Just for clarification, sir, you say August 1 of what year?
2005.
Okay.
What did happen, and not, I should say, to Ms. Spencer's credit, she did what she could to hold the city attorney, God bless Mr. Newton, and explain to him that this was a complex project, and at each level, it was getting more complex. We have submitted a total of four grading applications. Three of them were submitted in 2006. The November submission was the third grading application in November of 2006, and that was the first time that anyone woke up and found out that we had a ridgeline ordinance. So in response to the third application, after probably $100,000 had been spent by my client, and a small amount of attorney fees, I have to admit, we were advised that there's a ridgeline ordinance, we need to go back to square one. I asked Ms. Spencer, I said, no one knew about this beforehand, so that has been part of the delay. What specifically prompted the lawsuit is Ms. Spencer advised me that Carl Newton wanted, and he has every right to, he wanted to take a tough position on this. He was getting a lot of flack from neighbors, not the least of which was her honorable former councilman, Jan Height, who lives, probably rifle shot from the property, but is not a neighbor. So the lawsuit was filed. It wasn't served for months and months. Finally, the lawsuit went forward, and there wasn't really a lot of opposition, indication the lawsuit was filed in 2006, the preliminary injunction didn't come about until the following year, again, with us submitting, having submitted three grading applications already before the injunction came about. So my client was actively engaged throughout the time of the lawsuit in trying to correct it. There was no depositions taken, there was no discovery taken, costs were tried, all the attorneys tried to keep costs at a minimum, because what Chandra Spencer and the city wanted is what my client wanted, and that is to do this by the numbers and by the book. I want to talk a little about Mr. Dominguez, because over the course of five years, he's gone from, I suppose, being not just a client, but I've grown to like him and admire him. Mr. Dominguez is Cuban-born. He came here, as he jokingly tells people, 1950-something B.C., and apparently, this is an inside joke to everyone who is Cuban, B.C. means before Castro. He came here with nothing in his pocket, started in Florida, has made his fortune here, and lives in this valley. He's active in this valley. The intention of my client from the beginning has never been to subdivide this property, has never been to develop the property for houses. What he has done is, in addition to the residence that he owned in approximately 1999, he bought large swathes of adjacent property. So what he now owns is approximately 15 acres. There has never been an intention to develop this. It could have been that, had he not have bought it, it would have been subdivided, other property owners would have bought it, they would have built houses. But it has been my client's philosophy about it, that he has wanted to expand into a large backyard, and that has been his goal all along. Now, there is no intention to subdivide, there is no intention to build other houses. He is delighted with the prospect of having to plant additional oak trees, and since I have come into this case in August of 2005, not a pebble has been moved, not a stop notice has been issued, and we're talking over three, approximately three and a half years now, three years and four months. So I mentioned that, while we talk about the violations, and is my client, did he start off on the wrong foot? Absolutely. We are here today, as we have been for almost three and a half years, hat in hand, trying to do what is required of us. And since August 2005, my client has been on a very steady path that brings him here tonight, and that has been grading applications and initial studies, and with each grading application, there was more work to be done. And when the ridgeline ordinance came into everybody's focus at the end of 2006, we had to start again for all of those, for those drawings, and those studies, and those soils. My client has incurred approximately $100,000 in the engineering fees so far. It has frankly been a learning curve for my client, and from what I understand, it's been a learning curve for the city, because some of the issues in this project have not come up before and have not needed to be addressed before. Complex enough was it that the initial study had to be evaluated, not by the city, but there was an outside third party, because the city candidly admitted, we're not really equipped, and we don't have the time to evaluate initial studies, so your guy is going to have to pay approximately $10,000 to have an outside third party look at the initial study. We did that. At the preliminary injunction, it was the optimistic view of Chandra Spencer that this whole project should take no more than two months to get through, to get through to grading application approval. That was approximately 16 months ago. I estimate it based upon my experience, at least six months. It certainly has been longer than anyone planned. It has been suggested to me that, because my client, he didn't start out on the right foot on this, that there's a price to pay for that. I would remind the commission that we're talking about stop notices that probably the last one was in January of 2004. We are over three and a half years ago. At some point, we are here today, and the commission is here today, in its function as land use regulators. I am here not in the job of trying to suggest that there's any punishment owed, but it is a land use issue. If there is punishment to be meted out, then I would suggest the attorney fees, what is now four to five years of time, and my client's earnest effort to make this project work and to get done what needs to get done is his, is his proof of his sincerity. Commissioner Ostrom brought up a point that I was going to address. There is nothing in this proposal that if my client would have done what he should have done three, four years ago, the proposal would be exactly what it is now, except the ridgeline ordinance did come in, January 1, 2006, but nobody noticed it on the radar until the end of 2006. So if my client had done this by the book and by the numbers from the beginning, and no question he should have, if he had done that, we would be standing here today with exactly the same proposal that we have. So I think that that is worth noting. The one objection that has been made, and it's worth mentioning in advance, because I want to put Mr. Thule's objection in context. Mr. Thule and my client have an unpleasant history together. Mr. Thule is a neighbor of my client, and their difficulty started in 2003, in October, when Mr. Thule sent a letter to my client telling him that what I would describe as a silver submarine, that looks like an old World War II missile silo, about 60 feet long and 30 feet wide, in the shape of a tunnel, that my client learned in October of 2003 was on his property. Mr. Thule sends him a letter that tells him, I think I have a right to keep that on your property, and by the way, there is an ancient easement over your property, and I can use that too. Now, this easement would require going through hillside, going through brush, going through concrete, going through cement. It was an absolutely unusable road, but it went back to early times before there was the access of Josell. Everyone along Josell Drive, including Mr. Thule and Mr. Kidman, who's also here, everybody uses Josell. But this express easement, it did exist. What was more to the point is Mr. Thule was insistent that he have the right to go on my client's property and prevent my client, as he said in his letter, you cannot go on, you cannot interfere with my use of this property, and you can't put any fence up there separating our property. Attorney John McIntosh responded and explained that a recent survey showed Mr. Thule's use of my client's property, he was on our property, and told him, stop. Mr. Thule responded with his own lawsuit in 2003. He suffered a significant loss in December of 2003. He dismissed his lawsuit against my client in defeat, for all practical purposes, in January of 2004. My client still had the problem. The submarine, this big silver submarine that would be about the size of this room, still existed on my client's property. Mr. Thule still would not let, well enough alone, he wouldn't remove it. My client ultimately had to file his own lawsuit in 2006 against Mr. Thule to quiet title to his property, to establish that this submarine is on my property, and you have no right to keep it there. That lawsuit was ultimately settled in 2007, with Mr. Thule agreeing and frankly capitulating, and he removed the submarine and agreed that I will make no further claim on your property. My client paid Mr. Thule and Mr. Kidman $20,000 to let go of the ancient express easement. But the key to the case was, we finally got the use of, of Mr. Thule's use of our property out from underneath us. This is the history. There is no love lost between my client and Mr. Thule, and frankly, Mr. Thule, God bless him, would not miss an opportunity to take another strike at my client. He's been presented with that opportunity tonight, and his opposition and his objection basically is a rehash of what went on four years ago. I want to compliment, and I hope I don't do terrible on his name, Darren Segmiller, or Siegmiller. I've gotten to know all the city staff very well, because they have worked remarkably hard on this, and I have to say that I'm impressed, and I want to thank all the city, city individuals here. They have worked on this project, not with an eye toward, we want to make Mr. Dominguez pay, not with an eye toward, we want exact a pound of flesh from him. They have worked on this project with the city's best interests, that how do we, given the situation we have, how do we turn this into the best possible scenario we can? The planting of the oak trees, the fact that there is going to be no construction on any of these properties, because my client is putting them all together as his backyard. The fact that a fortune is going to be expended to buttress and make sure that that hillside is not only as good as it was five, six years ago, but in fact is more beautiful, more environmentally friendly. And I would now, if I can have Mr. Horn, who's the chief engineer here, he is also here, and if there's, unless there's questions for myself, I'll let Mr. Horn speak, and if you have any policy questions or political questions, I guess I'll answer those. If they're engineering questions, I'll defer to Mr. Horn. Any questions for me first? Then I would ask Mr. Horn, I believe he's the next speaker.
Basically, I'm here to answer any questions. I have a card if you wish, but I have no formal presentation to make. I think Mr. Darren Segmiller and Mr. Hahn have covered just about everything. If you have some technical questions on the grading plan, that sort of thing, I'd be happy to answer them, or try to.
Yes, this was a question I posed to staff earlier today, and it was suggested I speak with you. What was the degree of the slope prior to the legal grading? I mean, I'm looking at the 2000 aerial photo, and it looks as though the degree was greater at that point in time. So now it's what, at 46 or something like?
Forty-two degrees. It's still approximately 42 degrees, give or take a few tenths. We actually did a calc today, and I think it was 42.
I did, while you were in the other meeting, I did receive that. The current cross-slope of the average cross-slope of the property is 42 percent. Prior to the illegal grading, it was actually 41.75 percent, so for all intents and purposes, it was about the same.
So it was less, okay.
Correct. Thank you.
All right. I think that's it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Quick question. So for the last three years and four months, we've had an unstable hillside? Is it unstable right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I will ask one other, and that was, sorry. What would be required to return the northern portion of the site to its original condition? How much dirt would need to be imported or cut from the slope itself and brought to do that buttressing?
If I understand your question, it would be stay out of the upper two-thirds and put it back the way it was? Is that essentially what you're saying?
Absolutely, thank you.
We looked at that really quickly today also, because Mr. Segmiller had called and asked that same question, and essentially, I calculated would take about 20,000 yards of dirt to put some dirt back, maintain what's there, and then hold that upper two-thirds in place, and we'd have to extend a fill down because it sticks out a ways. About 20,000 yards, of which we have about 6,000, so in the end, it means we would have to import about 14,000 yards of dirt from some other location. That's quite costly. Besides, I'm an engineer and love to do plans, but we essentially would have to start most of this process over, in revising plans, soils reports, landscape plans, et cetera, et cetera.
So that means then that the area that we're looking at in the project description where the proposed gazebo would be, I mean, you're going to have to take, that's going to be part of the cut that you have to bring down?
Yes.
Yes?
Well, it's the other way around. To return it back, we would have to fill it up a little, and we wouldn't have that cut available to do the things that we have to do per city code, two-to-one slopes, paved benches, down drains. It has to be at a two-to-one slope. The terrain out there is relatively steep, as you can see by the 42 degrees. Put that in terms of what we think about every day, the slopes that the city requires are basically two-to-one slopes, they're closer to one-to-one in many areas, and in fact, even a little steeper, which is one of the reasons for the instability to begin with.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry, Mr. Horn, it says in our report that approximately 11,000 cubic yards of grading was done without a permit in the early stages of this. Was that, was that earth that was moved kept on-site? Was it removed from the site? Tell me what the deal was with this, exactly what was this grading that happened?
Okay, what I did, I don't know the total answer, because I wasn't around until the end of 2005. We flew new aerial topography so that we knew exactly what the whole site was at that time after the grading had taken place. We had located older topography prior to, in 1999. We just took those two maps and calculated the difference between 1999 topography and 2006 topography, and that was approximately 11,000 yards. Now, whether some was hauled off or whatever, I don't know, but I can tell you that was the difference, so we have called that the amount of dirt that had to be paid for in the legal grading portion of it.
Okay, but in your review of the site and your, the time that you've spent out there, and how the site would look naturally versus how it looks now, was that dirt moved and other pads created, or was part of this hillside hollowed out to get more flat ground? I mean?
No, in fact, it was stopped incomplete from what they were trying to do, so it was steeper in some areas than it should have been. It looked to me, when I reviewed the site, that it had started the grading, started to put some pathways in, brought some of the dirt down, and perhaps were planning on putting it back. I didn't interrogate anybody. That was Mr. Hahn's job. My job was, how are we going to correct this thing and get it in a stable and safe condition? And what was the approximate yardage? The city had requested to know what that number was to the best of my ability.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Good evening, my name's Greg Kidman. I have the property on Josell Drive that abuts the east portion, southeast corner of his property. First of all, I'd like to start back in July of 2002 when this started. We did approach Mr. Dominguez's laborer, his grader, his foreman, informed him that it's illegal. I worked with the fire department for 35 years, informed him of such. I'm a licensed contractor, and I brought it to his attention. His foreman said, we will put it in, we will seek permission later. That started the process. We have a nice picture painted of Mr. Dominguez. I have nothing personal against Mr. Dominguez, we're friends. I do have a problem with what's transpired in this canyon. Four years we put up with grading, weekends, Saturdays, Sundays, holidays, code enforcement coming out, phone calls down here, inspectors coming out, going on my property to access his, to view his property, because they weren't allowed to physically walk on his property. So I hiked him through the brush on my hillside to show him the atmosphere. I said, why don't you just walk over on his property? Says it's illegal, we can't do that, but I can go on your property. But I can go on your property. I gave him permission, code enforcement, several times. Mr. Thule gave code enforcement. Talked to his foreman, told him, "You need to stop." His foreman said, "I am doing what I've been told to do." Code enforcement said, "Are you willing to go to jail for that man?" He said, "No." He says, "Then you get off your tractor." Four years we put up with dust, noise, no water abatement at all. He takes the brush, he doesn't remove it. When I graded my property, I've been there thirty-two years. I could not burn it. I had to haul it off. Every piece had to be removed. He buried every stick of brush in that canyon. It's buried everywhere. I have a shop with fourteen and a half feet of footings because of landslide problems. The geologist for LA County, Al Seward, who you probably all know, did my geology report. Fourteen and a half feet. Over excavation, this is in 1982. So he can come up. The problem we have here is they're accusing Mr. Thule or myself, there were seventy signatures from Iron Canyon homeowners on the first petition to city council, seventy. Jan Height was the mayor. She does live across the street from Mr. Dominguez. Mr. Hahn paints a picture, she's not there. She is there. She's right across the street. She listened to it. She had the dust. She had the noise. She had the same environment. Mr. Thule happens to be on top of the hill, so he got impacted the most. He got beat up every day of his life for four years. And not once did city council or anybody come out to help us. When Mr. Thule reads the letter, you will be amazed that you ask a question, why did this go on for four years? That's my question to you. That's my question. Why did you allow this for four years? We got to put up with this for four years, and now he comes back. It's after the fact. He had it planned. His guy said, "That's what we're going to do," and that's the way it's going to be. Senior Inspector John Robinson, you might want to talk to him someday about all the permits and the issues that he had with Mr. Dominguez regarding his personal residence and regarding grading. Talk to Mr. Robinson. He'll give you some great information. Now, we need to get over to the project description. Mr. Hahn gets all he wants. Okay, I got you. All right. Project description. If you look at the site that says "proposed garage," the pad, I hired a personal engineer from Spindler Engineering. Seventy thousand cubic yards was his estimation, seventy thousand. He cut forty feet off the ridge line where the garage pad is. Forty feet, that's the estimation. Where our problem is with the garage. I never could see his house. I got to look at his house. Now I'm going to have to look at his garage. And the whole thing boils down to restore it. In conclusion, granting this approval sends a wrong message to everybody that follows the laws out here. Requiring to restore the ridge line where the garage pad is, we don't care about all the gazebo and that. We got to look at this new pad, this new garage, that I didn't, I didn't look at that thirty years ago. Select a new site for his garage, mitigate the soils issues, have fish and game come out. How many, how many fish and game? I got, I got natural red hawks living in my trees. So notify fish and game, the illegal grading has to stop.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Mr. Thule, next up.
I am the aforementioned Mr. Thule, and I've got a certified copy of aerial photographs from the city from 1995 to 2005, and it's very clear what, what's happened. And I'd like to read the letter that I submitted. During the illegal grading process, two protected oak trees, which were on my property, had portions of limbs, twenty-two inches or more in circumference, growing over into the subject property. They were cut off at the property line by contractors of Mr. Dominguez. No permission or permit had been issued. This fact was admitted by Dominguez in court in writing and was attested to and signed under penalty of perjury by Dominguez. The city forester, Wayne Smith, did a field investigation but did not follow through with the case. The grading division issued two stop orders during the three-year period of illegal grading, and Curtis Nay issued a letter stating that a substandard notice would be filed against the parcel if the illegal work was not stopped. No follow-through was done by the city, and the illegal grading continued. I filed for a temporary restraining order to get the courts to intervene, and after spending a week in court and spending over ten thousand dollars, I was informed by the court that no evidence had been provided to show this court that the City of Santa Clarita is incapable of enforcing their own ordinances. City of Santa Clarita was in court for a year. I can only imagine what the costs were on that. A signed petition from the residents on Joe Sill Drive, Iron Canyon, and the east end of Warm Springs was submitted to the city council during the time near the end of the illegal grading, calling for the city to enforce its ordinances. And we, Jan Height, and several members of the Iron Canyon Homeowners Association were assured that no grading permits will ever be issued for this site. The words from council member Loren West regarding the proposed permits were stated after the regular session to myself and Greg Kidman to the effect, "Over my dead body." A grove of twenty or more laurel, California laurel or bay trees was completely destroyed when the ridge line at, at the east end of the project was illegally graded down forty feet. If he put that ridge line back, that one ridge line to the east, I would drop all my objections to this. Now, from my house, I've got to look straight into his windows. Please do not reward this unlawful behavior by issuing corrective, read retroactive permits. I was personally informed by the grading contractor before any grading was done that their plan was to engineer the project through the grading and then apply for the appropriate permits because it would be impossible to get the permits in advance. Please consider issuing a permit to restore the grading to the original profile and then advise the applicant to apply for a grading permit like everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thule. Thank you for adhering to the time limit, too. That was very thoughtful of you. Now I'll give the applicant the opportunity to respond to any of the comments you've heard. Mr. Hahn, you'll be speaking again on behalf of the applicant.
If I didn't mention before, I should, that Mr. Kidman was also sued by Mr. Dominguez in the same lawsuit. And was paid money by my client to let go of this, of the, of the ancient easement. Mr. Kidman's made a number of interesting comments, and since I was involved in the lawsuit, he started off talking about, in 2002, in a very upset and a very angry tone, this is six and a half years ago. This is what I am, what I have been saying. This is ancient grudges that are long before the ridge line ordinance and do not help, I think, stabilize this hillside and get us to where my client wants to get. The code enforcement notices for all of Mr. Kidman's complaints that someone had to go on his property, they were all personally handed to someone at my client's property. They came on the property and gave each of these stop notices back in 2002 and 2003. The seventy objections that Mr. Kidman has referenced, you note that Jan Height is not one of those objecting people. She is not here tonight. She has not sent in any letter of objection. When was this list given? We're going back again, four, five years ago. It is old complaints. It is old news. Mr. Kidman is frankly angry, like Mr. Thule is angry. Though, Mr. Thule, I compliment him. He does a better job of, of conveying a cool exterior. The comment that Mr. Hahn gets all he wants in that angry tone that he wasn't, he didn't think he was getting enough time, I think conveys, this is the tone that my client has, has dealt with. Mr. Kidman's property cannot be seen by my client's property. He is, there's my client's property, there's Mr. Thule's property, and then there's Mr. Kidman's property. For Mr. Kidman to have ever used the easement that we ultimately had to pay him ten thousand dollars to relinquish would require him to drive over and through Mr. Thule's property to get to my client's property. As to Mr. Thule's letter, I know he sent that in, in his, in his objection. I just want to correct two things quickly. There was never an admission in any court, in any deposition, in any proceeding, that my client has done any of the things that Mr. Thule has been beating the same drum for year after year after year. Mr. Thule, God bless him, never misses an opportunity to take a swing at my client. This "never say die" attitude of Mr. Thule is for events that were three to five years ago. I bring this up because when we listen to objections, and we don't have the list of the seventy people, curiously, we don't have Jan Height, curiously, she, she apparently has no objection. All these people all got notices, all seventy-some-odd people could all have come here, or they could have signed the petition, or if Mr. Thule will all his energy, would have gone around and regotten seventy objections around all the neighbors. None of that has happened. It is all old news. My client has wanted, does want, and is here for one and only one reason. He is belatedly admittedly, he's doing it by the numbers, and I ask that the commission adopt the recommendations of the city so we can be sent on to the next hurdle with the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Restored discussion?
One quick question, maybe Darren can answer this for me. Does anybody know what the intent was of the initial grading without the permit, movement of that initial eleven thousand yards? What was the intent?
The intent, the description that we've received from the applicant, that was that it was always intended to be some sort of oasis landscaping. It doesn't appear that there was ever any intent to subdivide or to do anything else. It's really just a big backyard.
Basically just flattening down the terrain to make a backyard?
I don't know if flattening down is the correct term, but landscaping and moving things around to make a backyard.
Okay.
And just to reinforce that, he did a lot line adjustment, so it's all one parcel. Even if he was to try to subdivide, you'd have to come back. He's made it all one parcel.
Correct. The, one of the requirements prior to the accessory structures was to combine his personal residence, his personal property with this twelve and a half acres, and he's done that.
Mr. Chair, I have a quick question for staff also. I heard somebody talk about additional grading for the garage. Do you know what that would entail?
I'm not, I, I know that the location that he's proposed for a garage is generally flat. I would ask probably one of our city engineers to come up and see what other grading might be required. We do have a Trolle's, Army Engineering Department, if you'd like further clarification on that.
Yes, I would, please. Thank you.
Trolle Sneablo with the Associated Engineer with Development Services. With regards to that, it's a flat pad now. I don't believe any additional grading would need to be done, other than maybe some overex to make a stable pad.
Okay, so it wouldn't have to be regraded and...
Not in the area of the proposed garage.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions? I'd like to ask staff, could you please verify when the, the date of the last stop work order was issued on this? Because it was unclear to me in the staff report because we, we referenced July 2002 and then said over a five-year period, which, which would have pushed it into 2007, but Mr. Hahn said that the last one implied in his testimony at least preceded or did not post-date July of 2005. Is that correct?
If you'll give me a moment just to look over the timeline that we provided you. I have June 2005, the issue, the city issued another stop work order for hillside brush clearance and, and grading in violation of the municipal code. So...
That was the most recent one issued?
That's, that's what I have, yes.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Okay, then I'd like to close the public hearing, and we'll go into deliberation.
Well, I, I, I'm sitting here in, I, I live in Sand Canyon, and this is one of many things that goes on in Sand Canyon. We've, we've had our share of, as, you know, it's easier, and I'm not really sure, but the, you know, alleged, it's easier to ask forgiveness and to ask permission type things. But in reality, I think my, my decision has to be based upon very pragmatic principles of what I'm doing here. We're, we're planning commissioners, and I think that what we want to do is to create a safe, stable slope. I'm not sure that that was a safe, stable slope when Mr. Dominguez first arrived at the scene. And, but I'm sure with the talent that we have working on it now, it will be a safe and stable slope after they can do their, you know, their magic on it. So I, I really think that that's our, our, our area of responsibilities, to make sure that whatever we decide is a, is a, is a, is a correct planning response to all the issues given to us. If there's some, you know, something to extract from the flesh, then, then they can kick it upstairs and deal with, with the city council people.
Mr. Traubman?
Well, I agree with Commissioner Ostrom. I think it is the responsibility to determine in findings what we think is correct. And I think returning, you know, what we, what we need to do is, is approve the actions that are going to return this area to its former condition or as close as possible to that. And so, you know, if, if the garage itself isn't an issue, then I don't really have a problem with that. But when I look at the, the photos, the prior photos for the gazebo area, it looks as though, even though it might have been somewhat flat, it's still been altered with trees and shrubbery removed and that sort of thing. So I don't think it's appropriate to place a pad up there and, and place walkways and things. I don't think that's returning it to the original condition, so it's not in keeping with, for instance, the hillside development review finding of natural topographic prominent features retained to the maximum, maximum extent possible. So I think that there, it's not actually abiding by, you know, one of the, the intents of the hillside development ordinance, which is mentioned earlier, it's mentioned in the, in the timeline back in 2002. So that was obviously in place, whether there was ridge line preservation, there was still the intent with hillside development. So I don't think that that's an argument for saying that it, it was an unknown requirement. But one of the stated purposes of the hillside development ordinance is to maintain the essential natural characteristics of the area, such as major landforms, vegetation, and wildlife communities, hydrologic features, scenic qualities, and open space that contribute to a sense of place. And when I look at what is proposed for landscaping and such in the proposal that we received in our packet, it looks to be, again, sort of an over-engineered, inappropriately landscaped vision. So I think that if it's returned to natural landscaping, natural form to the degree possible, that would be my preference. And I, I had asked Darren earlier about bringing in dirt to, rather than cutting and filling. And Darren, what you had stated to me is that there is an issue of timing on getting that dirt in and getting that in place to stabilize the slope. Is that the, did I understand you correctly?
I apologize. The timing related to...
To importing dirt versus doing cut and fill on the property?
I think there, there are some issues. For example, it would require, based on what Mr. Horn said, an additional entitlement, revised plans, things of that nature. So it would, it would require time to, to make the, the type of adjustments that you're talking, yes.
Okay. Well, I think time is of the essence, so I think it's more important to do what has to be done now on that property to bring it into... to be done now on that property to bring it into compliance.
Just to be clear, Commissioner Traubman, when you say to bring it into compliance, are you talking about the landscaping period to conform to the existing, not to return the property to its original natural state that's been altered by the grading?
Well, I think it should be closer to that, rather than being, you know, having walkways, paved walkways and paths and things. I don't think that that's, you know, the discretion here is whether we want to alter natural landscape within that two-thirds area and within that area close to a significant ridge line. And, you know, I think the property owner has plenty of other property that's available on which he can put accessory structures without having to go up and make that alteration.
Thank you.
Pregnant? Scared? Alone? Sometimes, knowing where to go for help is half the battle. You want straight, honest answers you can trust. At the SCV Pregnancy Center, you'll receive the personal care and support you need to make informed decisions at this important time in your life. The choice is yours. Choose to know. All services are free.